It's now six o'clock on Thursday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Casey?
Here.
Mr. Hankins?
Here.
Mr. Ritz?
Here.
Mr. Arnie?
Present.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Present.
Mr. Ackley?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found at the back of this chamber. At this time, I would request that all commissioners and members of the audience turn off cellphone ringers and any other electronic devices so there aren't any disruptions during our proceedings. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting.
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ackley, second by Commissioner Compton. Please vote.
Seven voted yes, Ms. Cutsforth abstained, motion carried.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to revise or approve, or I should say, accept into the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application. Are there any updates, Ms. Palm?
Yes, since the packets went out and the agenda was published last week, we do have three emails that were received in regards to Agenda Item Three B, an email from Marty Giff, email from Bruce Stolman, and an email from Clara Sue and Gordon Arnzendorf. So, emails, copies of these emails went out to all the Planning Commission earlier today. Also, hard copies have been provided this evening, so I would offer those as an additions record.
Motion to accept all the applications as amended with three additional emails today.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ackley, second by Commissioner Casey. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, we have two items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on these matters? Two A is a request to final plat lots one through thirty-eight, and out lot A, Chandler Creek, being a plating of tax lot H2 located in the southwest quarter of Section Sixteen, Township Fourteen North, range thirteen east of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, applicant TKC Chandler LLC. General location, South Thirty-Fifth Street and West Chandler Road, case number twenty-two zero-two dash zero-seven, or excuse me, S dash twenty-two zero-two dash zero-seven. Two B is a request to rezone lots one and two, overlook addition, being a replat of tax lot ten B located in the southwest quarter of Section Ten, T thirteen North, range thirteen east of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to RS dash one-twenty, for the purpose of single-family residential development and small subdivision plat lots one and two, overlook addition, applicant Cheryl and James Francois. General location, two zero zero-six Fairview Road, case numbers Z dash two-two zero-two dash zero-two, S dash twenty-two zero-two dash zero-three. Is there anyone who wants to speak on these matters now that I've announced them? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners?
Do you want to take these one at a time or both at the same?
Both at the same.
Okay. Make a recommendation to approve both items on the consent agenda, the first based on approval conformance with the preliminary plat, second based on approval based on conformance with the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations, and the lack of perceived negative impact on the surrounding area.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ackley, second by Commissioner Hankins. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, that brings us to the public hearing section of our meeting. Oh, yep, sorry, one moment of business here before we move to the public hearings. So, the two A, the Chandler Creek Final Plat, will appear before the City Council on April fifth, and two B will appear or be on the City Council agenda for April nineteenth. Now, moving on to public hearings. Oh, okay. Okay, so we're good to proceed? Okay, for the public hearings, I will announce each case and ask the staff to provide any updates for each application. The applicant will then present the request, and at that time, then I will open it up for public testimony. We have a lot of people here tonight, testimony will be timed, five minutes per individual. Once the applicant, once the public testimony is finished, the applicant has a chance to rebut, and then I will announce that the public hearing has been closed. At that time, there will be no more public comment possible. So, case number three A is a request to rezone Lot One Powers Edition from ML to RE for the purpose of existing single-family residential development, applicant Jeremiah Windsor. General location, three zero four East La Platt Road, case number Z dash twenty-two zero-two dash zero-three. Staff, are there any updates?
No updates, I'll just go ahead and provide a brief summary. This application is a request for a rezoning for previous non-conforming use on a piece of land down on La Platt Road. The house that's there currently has been vacant since the March two thousand and nineteen floods. It's currently zoned ML. The previous use of the residence was considered legal non-conforming. The ML zoning district specifically excludes any residential use. Since the house has been vacant for more than twelve consecutive months, the zoning ordinance states that it must revert back and be in conformance with the current regulations. The new property owner desires to use it once again as a residence and is requesting a change of zone to RE, which is residential estates. Staff is recommending denial just based on the area being planned, it's all zoned and planned for light industrial development. I know the property surrounding this particular location is currently under contract with an industrial developer, so I think now, since infrastructure is planned along that Highway Thirty-four corridor, we will see that light industrial development probably sooner rather than later. And with that, we can turn it over to the public hearing.
So, the applicant isn't here.
I think he should be.
Would you like to come forward? Could you please sign in and then state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm not really sure what to say, but I'm gonna, I'm not going to tear the house down, no matter how it's zoned either way. So, I guess, in my opinion, it doesn't matter if it's zoned back to residential or stays the zoning it is, so, I mean, whether they put up a plant or whatever they're gonna do behind there, I still plan on developing the property or, you know, re-renovating the house and probably adding a building, so, that's, that's pretty much all I have, so...
Thank you. Is there anybody who wishes to come up and speak on this matter?
I'm Jeff Wickman. I own the property about this of about ninety acres. I do have it under contract, we've done Phase One Environmental on it here in the last couple of months, we're in the process of doing Phase Two Environmental. It's been bored, and we're awaiting test results on that. The land is under contract with a developer that's looking to use it for the light manufacturing zoning. We have a plan, we've got a closing date of mid-April, so they're moving fairly quickly on this, and I'd prefer that the zoning stays as it currently is.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners.
I have a question for staff. Regardless of the decision, can he pull building permits on this, and would the city...
If it is not rezoned to a residential use, he cannot pull a permit for a residence, so he can't, he can't live there. I suppose the house could be repurposed as like a commercial office, something of that nature, but he wouldn't be able to pull a permit for a single-family residence.
Thank you.
Question for staff, I guess I can recall that, has it been ten years or so, we had an application for somebody down along La Platt, it was just a barn, and they wanted to rezone it for church use, and that was denied, because again, we've had plans for light manufacturing down there for a long period of time, am I remembering that right?
That's correct, we've had, there is a denial, a previous denial from the Planning Commission on this particular property back in two thousand and thirteen, and I do recall there was another one on a separate piece of property that was very similar.
Thank you.
Commissioners, comments, questions? Motions?
Well, Mr. Windsor, I apologize, I don't know how long you've owned the property or how you got into it, but this area's been planned for light manufacturing or heavy in various areas around there with the Highway Thirty-four corridor coming through, so the fact that it's currently zoned for light manufacturing is exactly where we want it to be in terms of long-term planning, and that's why the Planning Department is recommending denial on your application, and I will be in support of that, and I guess unless there's any further questions or comments, I'm prepared to make a motion. Hearing none, I'd recommend this application be denied based on the current future land use map of the comprehensive plan designating this property for light industrial use.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ackley, second by Commissioner Perrin. Please vote. I'm sorry? What's that?
Yeah. I hit the wrong button. Thank you.
Um, I can't change it. See if he can change it on his.
Or can you clear it out and have him rebut?
Sorry, Diane.
That's all right. I don't know how to clear it out. All voted yes, motion carried.
This matter will go before the City Council at its April nineteenth meeting. Moving on to three B, our request for site plan approval for lots two-three-seven A, one A, one, two-three-seven C, two-three-seven D, two-three-seven E, two-three-seven F, and two-three-eight C, Fontanelle, for the purpose of an eleven-unit apartment building, applicant MFR Partners LLC. General location, Country Club Court and West Martin Drive, case number Z dash twenty-two zero-two dash zero-four.
Madam Chair, as a resident of Fontanelle Hills and the current president of Fontanelle Hills Homeowners Association, I don't believe I can be impartial with this matter, so I will recuse myself from this item.
Okay. Please note that Commissioner Casey left the chamber at six fifteen. Is the applicant here? Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, I, sorry, David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, seventeen-hundred Farnham Street, Omaha, on behalf of the applicant, I was thinking we were having a staff report first, but...
Oh, well, I guess I did jump the gun there.
That's okay, and I wasn't, I was just confused.
Well, that's a kind way of saying I didn't go in the right direction.
No, that was not my intent, I'm off to a bad start here.
No problem, Mr. Levy. Ms. Palm, did you want to...
I can just go ahead and provide a brief summary, as previously mentioned, there were three emails that were received within the last couple of days that had been forwarded out to the Planning Commission and been made part of the official record. This application is for site plan approval over in Fontanelle Hills for Elevate Living for their apartment complex. They had an apartment building burned down on one of their parcels previously, they're coming before the commission and requesting site plan approval to rebuild that eleven-unit building. This portion of Fontanelle Hills is a bit unique in that it's all rezoned under an original planned unit development, it's all zoned RS-one-twenty, which is a single-family rezoning, however, in that original ordinance, it laid out specific uses on specific pieces of land and parcels, it allows for multifamily residential uses on this, this particular parcel, and in the packet is attached the original site plan from nineteen sixty-eight, it's extremely hard to read, but we did dig it up and we did find it. Staff is recommending approval of this request, it is, again, a replacement of an eleven-unit building that was lost, it would be off of, located off of Martin Drive in between Country Club Court.
Tanglewood.
Tanglewood, thank you. All of the parking proposed would be on-site, meet some minimum requirements for the zoning, there would be a landscape buffer, some green space in between the proposed parking area and Martin Drive. And with that, I can have Mr. Levy go ahead and provide his summary.
Very good, thank you, Tammy, and again, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and good evening, I think Tammy summarized it well, this is a building that would replace one-for-one, an eleven-unit apartment building that burned down. The building is very similar in geometry and size, exactly the same number of units, eleven units, twenty-two parking spaces. If this sounds familiar to you, Commissioners, we were here last fall, and we had an extensive hearing and went into great detail, and I can summarize it or talk to it again about why we could not replace the building in the site where it was previous to burning down. Essentially, that site is very steep, and that site does not meet current building code requirements or current Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. We had a prior site identified, and it turned out that that site was unclear as to whether it worked with the nineteen sixty-eight approval, to be direct about it, and so, rather than trying to continue down that path, we went back, and my clients really did a, truly a study of the entire site to find another location to replace this building, this site emerged as, as really the only viable site, and so, we're here before you tonight asking for your recommendation of approval to replace the building that burned down at this site here on Martin Drive that you can see there on Google. As it says in your staff report, this complies with the zoning, Tammy explained that better than I could. This is consistent with your future land use map. My clients have reached out to the neighbors on Martin Drive, and they will continue to do so. We recognize that this is a change of the visual condition on Martin Drive, and my clients, that the site is tight, but within those constraints, they have done what they can to provide visual landscape screening of the building from Martin Drive to keep the visual appearances as close as it can be to what it was, it will be different, but they have, we've done everything we can within the space available to create some visual screening and keep some greenery there between the building and Martin Drive. With that, we do have some subject matter experts here in case there are questions, we have the project engineer, we have the owner, is representative of the property, and I'm certainly happy to take any questions you might have as well, either now or after any public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will open the public hearing, the public testimony portion. Is there anybody who wishes to come forward and speak? Please sign in and state your name and address for the record.
Patrick Mullins, two-zero-one Martin Drive in Bellevue. I'm adamantly opposed to this proposal, obviously for self-interest and the detrimental effect I think this is likely to have on my property value, but I also think that I'm a little concerned about the site map there with the blue outline that you have that covers not only this existing lot, but it runs north and south, well past the existing lots, from one end of Martin Drive to up past the existing clubhouse. My concern is, is this the initial phase for potential expanded development? If so, the Fontanelle Hills neighborhood is fairly unique to Bellevue, and Martin Drive is the main entrance to this unique development, and to put something, I don't know if the artist's rendering is available or not, doesn't matter. Frankly, I think the thing is an eyesore, it does not remotely fit the existing architecture of the apartments that have been there for fifty years, and to put it right on the curb of the main entrance to this entire neighborhood is very disappointing to me. It's a three-story building that is gonna be covered up by a hedge, I think that's extremely disappointing and not remotely going to disguise or hide or fit with the ambiance of the neighborhood or the, the general feel of a forested, hilly residential neighborhood. There is excessive traffic in and around that neighborhood from the existing apartments. We've had a deer head in our front yard that the Bellevue Police Department had to come and put down, we've had our mailbox knocked down by traffic from the apartments, and I think about six months after our mailbox is knocked down, I went out on Sunday morning to pick up the newspaper and found busted auto parts in my driveway, followed some tire tracks through my yard, my neighbor's yard, an apartment dweller had hit the tree in the neighbor's front yard, careened across his driveway, hit his basketball station, luckily, there were no kids playing basketball, but then he exited through my yard, back out to the street, police came, police went up into the apartment complex, found the vehicle, but there's just excessive traffic through that neighborhood already, a lot of traffic noise. I don't think we need to add any more traffic in the area, there is excessive sewer stress now from the pumping stations that have to pump the water out of the, out of the neighborhood, I don't think adding additional stress to the sewers is going to be in anybody's best interest. That area has oak trees in it that are probably two-hundred-and-fifty years old, I would hope that we're not feeling that we want to knock down two-hundred-year-old trees that, again, are part of the ambiance of this, of this neighborhood of the, of the Bellevue, the Fontanelle Hills, the Fontanelle Forest area. I think that's all I have to say, strongly opposed to this development, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this matter?
Hi, Norm McLaughlin, one-oh-five Martin Drive. I also am opposed to this, completely agree with the previous speaker, but there's something else too, you know, Fontanelle Hills is about forty-five years old, as I recall, I remember it when it's built, I've lived in Bellevue all my life, in fact, I lived at one-oh-six Bellevue Boulevard North, right at the other side of the apartments, on the boulevard, and I was there when they were built. That neighborhood's been around a while, and people move into the area expecting certain things, that one house down in the curve, they're almost directly across from where this will be built, I think they moved in about a year ago, and they moved in with certain expectations that the neighborhood would be about the same, they would expect improvements and changes, but not an apartment complex across the street from them. I mean, think about it, you, you buy a new house, you invest in it, and directly across the street, there's a three-story apartment building, I just don't think it's right for that to be approved, for you all to approve that. What would you do if that was your house, an apartment is going up across the street from it? I, I don't think you'd be really thrilled about that, so, thank you, again, really opposed to this, bad idea, thank you.
Thank you.
John Ostrand, two-oh-seven Bellevue, thank you, sir, I've not had opportunity to meet him, but I am the individual, my wife, and it moved into that house that's gonna be right across the street. I, too, am adamantly opposed, this is way, I am way behind the power curve on even how this got developed into this far. The folks that say that they've been out privying us of this information, I was dropped off a letter yesterday, right here, that was put in my door, telling me of this, that we have been doing the neighborly thing to try to get a hold of people, to keep them on abreast of this kind of stuff. to try to get a hold of people, to keep them on abreast of this kind of stuff. Uh, yes, we did buy that house thinking we are in a private little community here. That corner is amazingly busy. It has bothered us already. And then to hear that this building is going in uh is gonna completely change one of the neighborhood, all of the residents in there, the noise that goes in there. The management of the folks that have the buildings already in place. I don't feel are taking care of that portion, let alone what that's gonna do to us. They run up and down those roads with the noisiest wheelers, a lot, a lot of in and out. They've they've closed the office there for now, but they've got the Amazon boxes, which is only, I've got Amazon trucks backing in and out of our driveway. Vehicles backing out of there. We're trying to get out of there. They run into the mailbox as of last week. We have not spent a lot of time in that house, but the the stuff that we've already dealt with. And then when I saw that rendition, I think it's gonna be a detriment to that whole entire area. I wished I would have known that there was no way of rebuilding that, but when I looked up to that parking lot, I'm not sure why they could not remove some of those old virtually dilapidated garages to get the ingress egress to meet some of those codes. If they were to demolish some of their old buildings and build potentially in that old location, it would be better because that's where it was designed for. The individuals that built that community, it did an amazing job keeping it looking private. This is just congestion. And to your concern on the the development, if it's going on that one, there is enough room equally down there. They would have to cut that entire bluff, but you could go one building, two buildings, four more excuse me, four more buildings in there. Where does it stop? I would ask that it stop now before it gets started and look at some of the other locations and how that may be approved or not that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Alan Stone. I live on one oh one Martin Drive. Moved into that house in January of twenty twenty twenty, after we moved up here from Kansas City. And what attracted us to that area was the beauty of Fontanel Hills. We we uh, as we were looking for housing in this area, we traveled a lot. It took us a long time to find a home and we kept coming back to Fontanel Hills. This property came up when we took advantage of that. I wanna echo my neighbors' comments and appreciate that. And I understand where the uh where the investors are are looking at too. And I would echo this gentleman's comment that if you folks had an apartment complex going up in front of your homes, would you be in favor of that? So, to this gentleman's point, I've been in there, I've been in that house since twenty twenty of January and I lost, I've already lost two mailboxes. The traffic, the flow, the noise, et cetera, continues to escalate. I would recommend and suggest that if we could look at alternative uh locations would be great. Um, someone mentioned that uh the one of the alternatives was over by the swimming pool. I don't know the the codes, the laws, et cetera, to going over there, but could we explore further? Any alternative locations in where we're at? This gentleman right here's homes on on the corner. I walk by that house every weekend because I'm out taking my dogs out for walks. It's beautiful, but it's busy. And so uh, to his point, uh, we need to look at other other opportunities. Thank you. And one one more thing, where does where does it stop? I I'm on the south end of it. There's opening in 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 front of my house. Does that mean that an apartment complex is gonna go up there? I certainly hope not. Thank you. I do appreciate your time and your any consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for uh all, listening to all the comments. I'm in between some of these folks. Uh, Ben, I'm sorry, my name is Steve Mansavage, two oh three Martin Drive. Ditto to everything. Uh, all the reasons why it wasn't built by the swimming pool, put them onto this one. Um, if you're building on the very south end of that blue box, I am gonna be amazed with this big, huge retaining wall to hold back that forty-five-plus-degree angle hill. Uh, but if it's going where the cursor is and beyond, um, to be clear for record, single-built homes, family homes, I'm all for, but not an apartment. Uh, I have lost three trees, two mailboxes, a camper trailer, basketball hoop, and a damaged tree. That's what the first gentleman was talking about. Um, twenty-two parking spots would be tight, probably so compact. Um, I've seen several vehicles slide in to the parking lot that's there where the current offices or the vacant offices now for the apartment complex. Um, so uh, what I would like to ask, if possible, I'm not used to this forum or the procedures here. Uh, if we get voted and he gets to build his house or his apartments, um, I would like uh speed bumps on that road, uh upgraded sewer system. Uh, currently, the the city comes out three, uh, six times a year and backflushes the line there. I guess it's wiggly, gets filled up with grease. Um, and I also cleaned it out about six months ago, ruder ruder at one A M. Hundred and fifty feet down my line uh and took the water out of my basement. Uh, it's fifty-nine feet to the curb from my drop, so it saved you a buck. Um, I think it would be very changing to that area and how it looks for everybody in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Catherine Barrett, I'm at two one one Avian Circle South. I'm on the other side of where the apartments are, so my property butts up to the existing apartments that you're gonna build on the other side. My concern is um when that apartment building burned down a couple of years ago behind us, unfortunately, they didn't have, the bats that were living in there didn't have to come and get a permit, so they relocated to my house. But apparently, that's just an indication. There's a lot of deferred maintenance that never occurs in those buildings. I have had problems with bats. I've had feral cats, twenty, thirty of them in my backyard. I call the apartment complex. They never deal with it. I think one of the other people mentioned all of the um garages that are falling apart. There's no doors. There's a lot of noise. And so, and and the fact that there is, I understand those buildings are older, but they're burning down. And so my concern, if they don't take and maintain the property that they have now, now you're gonna be building more of them in there. What guarantee do we have? You have another apartment fire and then it zooms through all of our neighborhoods. So, my concern is they are not a good neighbor. They're doing a lot of, they don't take care of any maintenance on that property. We've called, many of our neighbors have called. They don't respond to any of us, so I don't view them putting more apartments even closer to our homes as in any of our best interests. Not to mention, as several people mentioned before, when you have that, it changes the landscape and your property and and potentially the value and what we moved there for. I moved there for the view. I didn't move there to see the tops of burning buildings and broken garages. So, that's my concern. I don't know what guarantee they have going forward that they're gonna do any better of a job maintaining what they have today. Putting in another one is just more money for them. So, I oppose it for those reasons.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Ryan McLaughlin. I live at one oh five Martin Drive. I'm opposed to more apartments going in there. I'm recently moved from California in August of twenty twenty-one. Um, it's one of the Fontanel Hills areas, one of the prettiest areas in Bellevue to me from outsider. Um, they've already built one complex in that area that looks completely different than the other ones. You got vinyl siding, not wood, just doesn't, just sticks out like an eyesore. Um, like everybody has echoed, you're gonna add more, you're gonna go to build one right by the street. Um, you know, I see him and his son out, you know, every day back when, you know, when I was walking before it got too cold for my, for me. And I just wonder, you know, if you build one apartment there and the next one comes, the next one comes. The noise is insanely bad. I'm from California. I don't know the laws here with mufflers, but there is none, like every other car that goes up that echoes shakes the entire street. Um, and I just, I just frankly think they're not well taken care of. It's, they've been there since the sixties, like somebody said. And they just need to do, put more money and focus on upgrading what they have, not adding more. And I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean Fisher. I'm uh um here on behalf of my mom, a homeowner, uh, one one three Martin Drive. Um, both my parents lived there.
Could you sign in, please?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to be one more voice um on behalf of my mother, who has lived there for over thirty years. Um, for all the same reasons. Um, this apartment building does not fit. Um, does not fit aesthetically and does not fit a very, very busy street. Um, like Mr. Mullins, we've had deer uh killed, limp off into my parents' yard, have to come and be shot by the police. We've had people who walk up and down and up and down the street. We've had vandalism, pumpkin through the front window. It just seems in the last ten to fifteen years, um, the traffic, the noise, the lack of care and concern for this neighborhood has deteriorated um just dramatically. Um, I would echo the people who would um want to improve what is there. Um, it's scary to think they keep burning down. Well, why are they burning down? What's happening? Let's improve what's going on before we try and cram in more parking, more cars, more mess. Um, all in the name of what appears to be money. Um, if a building burned down, then let it burn down. Turn it to green space. Do something different. Um, is eleven more apartments going to make that big a deal? And I too am frightened by the big blue area outlined. It's just one after another. Let's get another building in there. Um, I'd ask the Commissioners to really think about this. It's a beautiful area. It was a beautiful area. It could continue to be a beautiful area. But it really impacts a lot of families. And I'd like you to consider that. And thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. Levy, if you would like to come back up, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Again, David Levy on behalf of the applicant. Um, we heard a lot about yeah, I'll I'll let you know. Okay, thanks. Uh, we heard a lot about the neighborhood. Um, people have concerns with the neighborhood. Uh, and people don't like an apartment complex nearby. This is building uh that's proposed here as a replacement building of eleven apartments that have been there for between forty-five and fifty years. This apartment complex has been there for between forty-five and fifty years. This request is driven by a building that burned down. The request is to replace that building essentially in kind. The building can't be replaced where it was for reasons that we talked about last fall at great detail, essentially because of the steep grade on that part of the site and because of the need to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This request is only for this building. I I think the Commissioners know that, but I wanna state it clearly for the record. Whatever the blue outline on the Google map is is the blue outline on the Google map. This request is only for this building. If another building were to be built or something different were to be built, we would be back here before you again. That would require yet another site plan approval. This request is only for this building if granted by the city council ultimately. And hopefully with a positive recommendation of this commission, that only allows the construction of this building to replace the building that burned down. The rendering uh of the new building is is a bit bright. And and you're a little bit kind of caught coming and going with that. You heard complaints about the the style of the buildings and the age of the buildings that are there. The goal here is to freshen up the look of the building, the geometry of the building, the overhangs, the the layout of the building is almost identical to the buildings that are there. But if there's a feeling that that is too bright, too modern, too different, we can certainly and we would welcome a condition uh of your recommendation uh that we continue to work with the city on the aesthetics of the building to make it blend in a little bit more. Uh, same thing with the landscaping. The site is limited. Um, but you know, as as much as we can do, we're happy to continue working with the city. And I I I don't mean to dismiss the complaints or the concerns about of the neighbors. They're certainly entitled to their opinions. But I I think what we need to come back to is is why we're here. And and why we're here is zoning and land use on this property. This proposal complies with your zoning ordinance. It complies with the existing uh approval from nineteen sixty-eight. I was born in nineteen sixty-eight, so I know that was a long time ago and this has been around a long time. Um, I could use a little refreshing myself perhaps. Um, this building complies with the zoning. This proposal complies with the future land use map. There's been an apartment complex here for approximately fifty years. We're talking about replacing a building that burned down, not adding an apartment complex, not doing anything more than this one building. I know I'm repeating myself, but I I just, I wanna make that very clear. That is the beginning and the end. With all respect, Commissioners of the issue before you. My client has received no complaints through the city in the last year about the condition of these buildings. Uh, if people have concerns or complaints about the maintenance of these, um, we welcome hearing about those and we will respond to those. But what we're here for tonight is a site plan approval to replace a building that burned down in a manner that is consistent fully with the zoning ordinance of the city of Bellevue. We're not asking for any variances or any exceptions. It meets the parking requirements and all other requirements of the zoning ordinance. Our engineer was here. Tom, you have something you wanna add?
Could you sign in, please?
Yeah.
And state your name and address.
No, over there. You're welcome to sign in. My pass.
Okay, my name is uh Tom Jisba, civil engineer, registered in the state of Nebraska. My address is one forty-four forty-five North One Ninety-second Street, Bennington, Nebraska. Uh, as uh David has been saying, we have complied with all the requirements of the city and of ADA uh to make this project work. One thing that I would like to remind you is that from the curve, edge of pavement of Martin Drive to the streetside curb of the new front driveway is roughly twenty feet. From there to the building is another forty feet. And that varies a bit, but we're talking about sixty feet from the edge of Martin Drive. Now, sixty feet is at least this distance, if not that distance. What we have done is pushed this building into that hill, which is not forty-five degrees, but probably around ten percent grade. And yes, we're putting a a rather substantial retaining wall in there so that we can push this building back away, also to provide the parking, of course, but it gives Also to provide the parking, of course, but it gives us the green space and the high shrubbery out in front. Now, I haven't done a study, but I think if you're coming down Martin Drive from the south heading north towards the curve, you would still see the clubhouse as much as you would now because that building is in the hill. Likewise, if you look at that hill from across the street, you're looking at an apartment building that's again, three stories high. Alls we're doing is pushing another building close to that, so it really doesn't change the view. There's a building there that now is covered up by another building. So in that sense, we're not really changing the view here. So I just want to make sure everyone realizes this is not sitting out on the curve of Martin Drive. We're not allowing people to park in the streets, nor are we giving them any chance to mimic what's at the sales. Well, the current, but empty now, I should say, the vacant sales office. There will be no ability to drive in there. The Amazon boxes are moving, uh, to the south. Over on the. On Tanglewood. So the sales office is moving, has moved to Tanglewood. And the, uh, Amazon boxes are moving away. So there is no, we're removing that congestion that's right there on Martin Drive as part of this project as well. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And I would just add too, the vehicular access here is off of, uh, Tanglewood and Country Club as well. So there's no, no direct vehicular, um, access to Martin Drive, no, no new conflict points being created there. Um, and I, I, I think Tom made some great points and, um, so I appreciate that. Any other questions from the commissioners? Anything I can answer or any of the other folks here from our team?
Commissioner Ernie?
Yeah, just I want to, I want to address there was some comments that came in via email, just so you're aware of those and you can address those for us. So one of the questions that came in was the plan and maybe you can pull it up for us. It shows four units on three floors, could be twelve, but you're only coming in with eleven today. Just that, their, their concern is that next thing you do is you'll come back and want to add a twelfth unit. Uh, we understand there's approval process for that, maybe talk about that a little bit. And it's talked, it's called out as storage. Kind of explain how that storage is gonna work. And the other concern is if it's true storage for the campus is then there're gonna be additional traffic. And do we need a couple extra parking stalls for people coming there to get their stuff? I guess, can you talk about that twelfth unit for us?
Sure. Yeah, thank you for that question. Um, no, again, this request is only for eleven units, same as the building that burnt down. That's a storage area for this building, for the people who live in this building. I think we all probably, if not. Okay, very good. Also the place where the utilities for the building go, so it would be really impossible to turn that into a unit. But I know I've lived, it's been a while, but I lived in an apartment and there was never enough place to base to put the things I wanted to put in the apartment. So that's a benefit to the eleven dwellers or renters in that building. Uh, and a place to put the utilities that serve that building collectively as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Maybe one more question for here, or maybe it's a staff question. So we had a lot of talk last time about the infeasibility of accessibility. Your engineer talked about ramps and all kinds of stuff, but that was on a different parcel than where we're at today, correct? Just make sure I'm clear on that.
Yep.
So the building that actually burned down around the corner from this, is that site not feasible to put a building there?
That's correct. This, this site where this building was is too steep uh, to meet today's requirements and it's too steep to have ADA accessible units. This site, uh, does allow ADA accessible units and meets all current city and, and building codes. Tom, you want to add to that?
One of the, uh, constraints on the original property that burned down is we can't meet the city of Bellevue's fire department requirements to get trucks in and out.
That's on the other parcel though, not this parcel, correct?
Not on this one.
That's where the burn down.
Yeah, we just couldn't make it work.
And Angela, I don't know if you can pull it up, um, maybe I'm confusing the question, but.
No, it's a different parcel.
Different parcel. That, so around the corner from this, where they're trying to build this, there was another, there was another building that burned down, I assume farther back in history?
Correct.
Yeah, you can see, or Diana, you can see it right there. It's like right across from what would've been the old clubhouse. You can actually, if you zoom in a little bit, you'll be able to see the.
Yep.
You're, so even that site, you can't get ADA on that, where that building used to be?
There's a replacement building.
Oh, it's already there?
Right.
Just can't see it. Okay.
Right.
That answers my question.
Yep.
Okay.
And, you know, Commissioners and, and for the public too, I, I, I don't mean to be, uh, I, I want to be clear. I've got the study here. It is literally a study. Um, and I can pass it around or try and put it up. We've got multiple options. We had uh, alternate one A, alternate one B, alternate one C, alternate two A, and alternate two B. Those were five sites within this property that, that my clients studied. They had their engineers, their architects fully vet and fully evaluate alter, five alternative sites to put this replacement building. And, and this is the site that worked.
Then just to follow up our staff, so just, we're replacing a building on a different parcel on this parcel. Can you kind of explain that a little bit? Cause like if my house burned down, I couldn't go build my house on my neighbor's lot. Am I?
The same owner owns the entire complex. The, it's, it's all of the same owner. It's on two separate parcels. It's, both parcels are extremely difficult to develop just because of the topography, the steep slope. So to Mr. Levy's point, what his client has done is they've opened it up to not only going and looking at one parcel or the other, but both parcels that his client owns.
And thank you, Tammy. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but further to that, this was zoned and approved as a single development project. So it's on two tax lots, but it was a single planned unit development approval for maybe lack of a better term altogether across those two lots.
So to kind of reference the blue line that everyone has talked about, um, this is a site plan approval specific to this one building. The reason that that is such a large area is because it's taxed together as one parcel. Um, there's been several lots, several tax lots that over time, over the last fifty plus years have been kind of put together and they're currently taxed that way. So when we pull it up on GIS, it pulls up the entire parcel. When we did our three hundred foot notification, um, just to err on the side of caution, we went from the entire parcel. So that's why it looks like such a large area. But that is one piece of the current apartment complex that is out there. They're both pieces are owned, managed by Elevate Living.
And, and just to be clear, one more further point on this, I think it points out what's being sought here is an approval for a change to that entire site. Right? To build a building that was over here, over here. That entire site again has been a single apartment complex for a long, long time. And it was approved as such all at, in one, at once, a long time ago. So this is a modification, a request to modify a longstanding existing approval.
Question for staff. I get with what you're saying. Um, my understanding, the way that this is written is we are only modifying the site plan of what's in blue, not both that used to be.
Correct. It's, it's a site plan approval that's specific to this parcel.
Yeah. And so I guess, would it be prudent to also adjust the other site plan to make it so that later down the road, he doesn't, and I'm not knocking you, I'm just saying, any owner can't come back and rebuild that, that is technically still allowed on that other site?
No. Um, it's really two separate parcels, so be handled in my mind, two separate ways. Um, the site plan approval is only for this parcel. If they ever wanted to do anything on that other parcel, they'd have to come through the same, the same public hearing process. So the city would still control that. Um, so I, I wouldn't feel comfortable placing restrictions on a parcel that we're not talking about. Um, public hearing is only for this parcel.
Even if they came back where the old building burnt down at and built exactly in that spot?
If they were building in exactly the same spot, it wouldn't require site plan approval because it would be that same spot. Site plan approval kicks in because they cannot build in that exact same spot because they can't meet current ADA requirements or fire code.
And I understand you can't meet ADA and fire right now, but in the future, ADA can change, we could get better technology. Somebody with deep pockets could come in and say, I want a building there. I, I look, I think worst case scenario, um, I have no prob, like you said, it's an apartment buildings. You guys have had apartments there. One burnt down, you want to put another one up. This is more economically feasible, makes sense. Worst case scenario, somebody else comes in and buys the other purse parcel, builds on that property that's right there. That's what I'm worried about. Um, two, the reason that there's no case history on this parcel is because the other one that came in front of us was for a different parcel, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is a completely separate parcel from the other one.
And then my last is where this is going is where the leasing office used to be.
Correct.
If we modify this, do we have to do anything about making it so that he can't later do as a technicality to build a new leasing office?
They can't build anything outside. If they want to build anything at all on this parcel, it's gonna kick in site plan approval. So if they want to do anything other than what would be approved under this application by the city council, they'd be coming back through that public hearing process. So it's controlled in that manner.
Okay.
And, and I would just say for the record, I, I agree in way. My clients acknowledge that.
Okay. Um, like I said, I, I, my personal is apartments, one bu, burns down. You gotta build another one in a slightly different area, or in this case, a lot different area. My concern would still just be that we're not taking the other one, the other site off the table at the same time, for what that's worth. So.
Other questions for me or I'm, I will sit down. Thank you.
I guess question for staff. We've recently, is the public hearing closed? We've recently had some other applications, I think, along Franklin for like townhomes. And Belalago, I think recently converted some single family into townhomes for a little more density. You know, one of the residents mentioned, uh, if we had other houses in there or something that looked more like houses instead of apartments. And again, site plan perspective, I appreciate, uh, Tom Jisba referencing that there is a building currently sits immediately behind this. But it's after there's been a slope and that there's green, green space in there. But I'm wondering if there's another alternative here to somehow put in townhomes wrapped around and you'd get almost the same usage. I guess Mr. Levy or Mr. Jisba, has that been considered at all in terms of, again, you'd almost have residential buffering against apartments and if someone wanted to go into those townhomes as rentals or purchase?
Yeah, Commissioner, a couple of things. I mean, one, with all respect, that's not the application before you. And the reason for that is that the goal was to try and replace the building that burned down with a building other than some of the exterior materials, trying to be a little bit fresher and a little bit more modern, exactly the same. Um, could you do a whole variety of different things? I suppose so. But I suspect if we were here with that proposal, then we'd be receiving criticism that it was different. I mean, I think you heard it in the public testimony tonight, that this building was different than the existing buildings. So again, with all respect, that's not the proposal. And, and those are the reasons why the, the goal is to try and do as, as close as one for one replacement, uh, for the building that burned down as we can.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Levy. And all of these neighbors are basically saying this is one more building than we used to have. Whereas our last hearing was a building on a completely different parcel. So we're trading into a new area. That's the problem.
It is, it is a different part of that site. That is correct.
Yeah.
Yep. Can I make one more quick comment? We are trading.
Sorry, we closed the public hearing, sir. Commissioners, questions? Comments?
I guess question for staff. There was quite a bit of discussion and I know Mr. Levy will say that's not the issue before us. But some of our letters talk about, uh, poor maintenance and upkeep of what's currently there. I know if you drive through, obviously it's an older apartment building. Uh, clearly a lot of things are grandfathered in terms of the stair casing and railings or lack thereof. I guess what is the, do we have any history of someone who's coming in to build new? To say, hey, you need to get your house in order on what you currently have. Or again, Mr. Levy's indicated there haven't been any formal complaints. And therefore that's not an issue for us to consider.
If there's issues in regards to maintenance or upkeep, you know, that's something that would potentially go through code enforcement. If it's, you know, deals with the exterior of the buildings, I have not verified whether there have or haven't been complaints. I would have to look into that. Um, as far as age of the buildings, there is reference made as to why they're burning down. Um, the current buildings there are old enough that I think it's safe to say when they were built, they weren't built to any type of code, any type of fire code. I don't know what the building code was fifty plus years ago. Um, any buildings that they construct now have to be sprinkled, have to meet fire code, have to meet ADA accessibility. It's a very different type of construction than what's out there currently. And I, I think we see why because there has already been more than one building that has burned down. Um, you know, probably due to the age of the building, the building materials and the lack of sprinklers or some of those other issues that are addressed by current code. Other than that, I, I, like I said, Mr. Ackley, I wouldn't be able to speak to if there's been any code enforcement complaints as to exterior or things going on on the property.
I got a question for staff. Let's say the other building did not burn down, it was still standing there. Could we still have this proposal in front of us tonight with them wanting to put a new building where it's going right now?
Yes. Um, any change to the site plan, it's the owner's prerogative to come forward and make a request. Again, since it's site plan approval ultimately is up to city council.
Mr. Levy, I guess, big picture. And again, we had some of this discussion last fall on the previous application. But what is the plan in terms of what happens going forward as some of these buildings become dilapidated, burned down? Cause again, the topography and the current zoning is gonna be an issue going forward, right?
The put, yeah, I mean, the topography is the topography. Um, I can't speculate that any of these buildings will burn down. These buildings were built to the codes that were in existence at the time they were built. I think Tammy makes a great point about the benefit of a new building is it's built to modern codes, but that's true today. That was true ten years ago, twenty years ago, uh, et cetera. Um, like any property, there's an ongoing maintenance program. Um, things do age and things are maintained and, um, you, you know, I, I don't have the report from the fire department, but I'm not aware that the reason that building burned down uh, was, was a maintenance reason or an age reason or anything like that. New buildings are sprinkled, which certainly helps. Um, but you know, building, brand, brand new buildings burn as well. So I, I can't speculate, but I, I do want to again be very clear and Commissioner Compton, to your question, this isn't a request for a, a building where the bu, other building is still there. And there's no intention to request to grow the property. This request is to replace eleven units with eleven units. And I, I, I know you're clear on that, but I just, I want to take the opportunity to say, we're not here to grow the property. We're here to replace the building.
One issue I would address, and I think maybe where Mr. Ackley is going with this. One issue I would address, and I think maybe where Mr. Ackley is going with this is, as buildings burn down, are we going to keep seeing requests for different buildings to be built? I, in my opinion, I believe the property owner is severely limited based on topography, based on all of the existing development that is out there. There are very few places left on that property. They're probably going to be able to meet ADA fire code in regards to slope if they want to rebuild. So, I think that they would be limited. You know, it's not going to be a situation where they're, they're going to get to a point where they're gonna, they don't have a lot of options. I think they're to that point probably now. There's not a lot of options as to where anything else could be rebuilt. So, if the building burns down and can't be rebuilt in the same location, there's, there's not going to be a lot of green space or a lot of areas left to add buildings.
That's a great point and, and thank you. And that's what we discovered in, in this exercise. Again, my clients went through five different alternatives and this was the one that was feasible. I, I suspect very many more of these requests and they wouldn't go very well either frankly, and, and perhaps nor should they. But more to the point, I think, is the point Tammy makes is this is an incredibly challenging site. And if it were possible to rebuild the building where it were, my clients would have done that. We would didn't, would, you know, this is, this is not where they want it to be. It is simply where they are in trying to replace those eleven units, generate income, which of course helps the ongoing maintenance of the property and upkeep of the property as well.
I guess for my part, again, nobody wants to see change in their neighborhood. I get that. And the last time we had the application, which was on a separate parcel and for probably various legal issues why that replacement building did not ultimately go through where it was proposed. I just wonder if there's some alternative along Martin Drive here where if a person were to put in townhomes, some kind of row homes, or again, it would seem to blend better across the street with the adjoining houses. And I guess for my part, I would prefer to hold this over for a month and see if that is a possibility or the applicant can suggest if a different time period is, is requested. But it seems like this deserves a little study from my part.
Mr. Ackley, my only concern is that they could just give us a different picture next month that looks better. That wouldn't change what they actually built because nothing we do can, other than it's apartments, the outside can change. We don't have any oversight of that. Would be my concern.
Well, but.
Does that make sense?
Well, but a three-story, eleven-unit apartment is certainly much different than if they have ten units of townhomes or something.
So, you're hoping to see something completely structurally different?
Again, just trying to figure out. I appreciate it sounds like they've been trying to fit an eleven-unit apartment building on various sites. I'm just wondering if they've tried to fit anything else on any sites.
Sir, I see you, your hand there, but we have closed the public hearing for public comment. He's the applicant. But the applicant gets a rebuttal and that's part of the rebuttal, plus the applicant is supposed to be available for questions from the commissioner. So, just to explain why that's happening.
I guess we.
Sir.
I guess before you leave, sir, we do have a process. If someone recommends to reopen the public hearing and assuming we'd have a second and we would have a vote on that.
I would recommend reopening that.
Well, and again, I've made a proposal that I have no idea if the neighbors would love it or hate it or maybe we're wasting our time with that proposal. So, I guess if anybody thinks it has merit, I would make a motion to open the public hearing and see if, again, would it make any sense for the applicant to maybe study a little further and see if something that looks more like single-family housing along Martin Drive could work or what the neighbors' reaction would be to that.
I guess as part of that, I would want to know from the applicant's representative if that's something that they want to look into or if they want to move forward with the application as is.
You know, again, I really, I appreciate the comment. And I've done this long enough to be very wary of saying, no, give us an up or down vote. One of our big constraints here is that because the building that was there was destroyed by fire, the new building is largely funded through insurance proceeds. And the insurance company will not fund a building that is substantially or completely different than the building that burned down. So, we really don't have an economically feasible way to come back with a townhome proposal. It, it would, it would undermine the insurance claim. The insurance company says, no, that's not the building that burned down. We're not going to pay to replace it with a different building. That would be a tremendous economic hardship and I, and I think an unwarranted economic hardship to my clients. So, for that reason, really, this is what we've proposed. My clients have worked incredibly hard to find a site for a replacement building that the insurance company will approve. Again, I understand the exterior looks different than some of the other buildings and we're more than happy to work between now and city council to work to make the building blend in better. And we'd be happy to work with staff on that. But beyond that, we're, we're really limited in what we can do.
Oh, real quick, while you're still up here, when do you have to break ground for insurance? Do they have a timeframe?
Just tell me. So, my client, the owner's representative says they have to break ground this year to, you know.
Be in compliance with insurance.
To comply with the insurance requirements, the requirements of the claim.
So, we have a motion to reopen the public hearing. Is there a second? There is no second. The hearing remains closed. Commissioners, your wishes?
I guess I will make a motion because I think to move things forward, I'm going to make a motion for denial based on the fact that this is replacing a unit on a different parcel and we're not adjusting the other parcel. Does anyone have a second? I'll second.
We have a motion for denial by Commissioner Ritz and a second by Commissioner Arnie.
Five voted yes. Ms. Cutsforth and Mr. Perrin voted no. Motion carried.
So, this is a recommendation which will go to the city council on April nineteenth.
I guess just for the record, again, I appreciate everybody's input tonight and I appreciate the applicant coming back with this application, but you did get a recommendation of approval last time when you were swapping out a building on the existing parcel. There was opposition on that as well, but I believe this body gave a recommendation of approval. So, it sounds like from our motion to deny, part of the issue is you're going to a completely different place and site plan approval is based on location and we've got lots of folks saying this is not a great place for this. Again, I'm open to alternatives. If you can come up with some single row townhome, something, but again, it's up to the city council from here.
Okay. Hearing's three C.
Should, uh, someone want to wave Mr. Casey back in?
Oh, yes. Mr. Casey. Can return to the chamber. Okay, so Mr. Casey has re-entered the chamber at seven eighteen. Hearing three C, there's a request to annex sanitary improvement districts number sixty-seven Normandy Hills and number two forty-two Cedar View and all abutting rights away. Applicant, City of Bellevue. Staff, is there an update?
Thank you. Since the city is the applicant, I'll go ahead and provide an update and a summary. What you have in your packet is we did one staff report, one analysis for the four different annexation areas we have on the agenda. The staff reviewed the different departments, kind of looked at the package as a whole. So, it was difficult to separate out in a staff report. So, I'll just kind of briefly touch on a couple items. I do want to point out that for annexation area three, the map was amended. The legal description was correct. The map did not adequately reflect that legal description, so that is taken care of. The agenda was amended earlier to reflect that. The SID's sixty-seven Normandy Hills and two forty-two Cedar View were before the planning commission, city council, approximately two years ago for potential annexation at that time. They were part of a larger annexation package. Part of that package was property to the north. There was litigation on that annexation package to the north that prevented the city from moving forward with the Normandy Hills and the Cedar View annexation. So, at that time, the annexation application for this area was halted and did not move forward. In the past two years, that has been litigated through the court system. The city was successful in that lawsuit. So, currently, our city limits do abut Normandy Hills on the north. So, this area is contiguous to the existing city limits. Just a couple of things to point out. With any change in annexation, obviously for the SID's, the SID tax levy goes away. That gets replaced with the city levy. Also, what happens is rather than Sarpy County plowing the streets or the Sarpy County sheriff patrolling the streets, those would all turn into city service, services. So, it'd be the city public works department that would be responsible for maintenance and upkeep. The city is prepared to do that. Also, one topic that I know will come up that has always been of interest in this area is when Highway seventy-five was improved and it was turned in, into and designated as a freeway by the state, Normandy Hills lost a second access point directly to Highway seventy-five. So, currently, there is only one access point in and out of the subdivision and that is off of the frontage road to the north. I, I know probably one of the questions that will come up and one of the questions that has come up in different emails and phone calls to the planning department is what about a second access? I think it's been clear that the state and the county are definitely not going to provide any type of secondary access. The city does have plans on its radar to provide a secondary access. Nothing's been engineered as of yet, but obviously with the annexation packages we have in front of the planning commission in their totality, we believe that development to the south is imminent for a number of reasons, but also there is finally a plan for infrastructure along that Highway thirty-four corridor within the next couple of years. So, we believe that we will see this area open up and develop. Part of that development would then open the door, so to speak, for a secondary access to the south. So, at that point, the city could plan for and facilitate a secondary access to the south down to Highway thirty-four. Highway thirty-four is controlled access, but if you look on the GIS map that Diana has pulled up, there is a secondary access point plan that lines up with Eighth Street on the south. There we go. And so, any secondary access that would come out of Normandy Hills would eventually line up with that access point. So, again, that is on the city's radar. Nothing's been engineered, but it's definitely been discussed and it's definitely being planned for. With that, we can open up the public hearing and we can answer any questions.
Does anybody wish to speak on three C? Please step forward and sign in and then state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dan Ruffner. I live at eight oh six Bordeaux Avenue in the Normandy Hills area. And there was a, I'm really not in favor of the annexation, but according to the council people that I've talked to and the mayor, that it will be happening. And so, I had just a few questions that the planning commission should be aware of. And also, so that if people turn on channel seventeen and see this procedures, that they will be able to, to hear my questions proposed and then formulate if they need to have any answers in their own minds or presented to you. And so, okay, when they do that, when will the street department begin concrete panel replacement? A lot of those were marked out two years ago and I don't think the CID had proposed any timeline to have those done. Excuse me, I'm kind of a slow writer. And then the next one was for garbage collection. And right now, the, the people down there contract with, I see, papillion sanitation coming around. And will that have to be contracted separately with the sanitation companies for garbage pickup in, after the annexation comes through? And, and what will the monthly rate be? Well, I don't, I'm not sure what the rate is right now, but if it will go up and down is, uh, I don't think any of you folks live in the Normandy Hills area. But that was just a question. And then another one that's kind of brought up to me was, will the city allow parking on both sides of, of the city streets? I know I've, I've worked for the natural gas utility company that served in the, the south part of Bellevue, south of Jewel Road. And so, you know, in my travels, they always had parking on one side of the street, either north, south, east or west. Parking was allowed on one side. And if that's the case, will, will they notify the Normandy Hills residents? You know, if they're parking side by side, if one of them's going to have to be, not park on one side. And when will the designation be made and will they have signs put up notifying the residents of that? Oh, and will the sewer use fee change any? Right now, it's billed on, on the MUD water bill. And I was wondering, since we'll be in the city, if the sewer use fee will be adjusted now then, since we're in the city instead of an SID. I'm not, I wasn't sure if, if there was a higher rate or lower rate for SID's instead of the city of Bellevue, but if that would change. And that was the end of my questions, but, but I'm really not for the annexation. I think the only thing we'll probably get out of it will be a library card. And because the services that we do, that are provided by the Bellevue Fire and Rescue Service, we do have not a lot of crime problems down there and, and I'm. And, and I'm sure that the, the Bellevue police, if they do come down, I, I know there's been some Bellevue police officers. That lived down in our area over the years and, um. But it's mostly the streets, a lot of it, uh, they came around a couple of years ago and put the little green spray paint on with the panels. That were supposed to be replaced and, and nothing happened after that, I think it was. Probably driven by the fact that the pending legis, uh, litigation through National Bi Products or the Darling Corporation. Hadn't been completed and so, um, we'll see how that goes. Is there any questions of me from the planning commission? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think if I may, I'll go ahead and just answer questions because it might be, it'll be easier for me to remember as we go and then also my answer. Questions some other people have, um, good question on timeline of panel repair, um. Our street department has already done kind of a general overview analysis of the Sid. They haven't gone in there real in-depth, that's something, I can tell you that our street department is really good. I've been in your shoes where I lived in an SID and I got annexed by the city and they, um, took care of my street better than the SID did. So I, I don't know exactly what their timeline would be, but if this package is approved by city council. Then Public Works and the Street Department would go in fairly quickly and do a thorough analysis of what needed to be done. And the city also works with whatever engineer your SID is currently using. Um, part of state statute is that if annexed, the SID would turn over all the records. That would include any engineering reports, any engineering analysis, so, um, the street department would probably, you know, might take a quick look at those two. And then do their analysis as well, so I, I can't tell you a specific timeline, but I can tell you from personal experience, they don't sit back and they don't wait. Too terribly long to take care of that, um, garbage collection, the city contracts with Papillion Sanitation. So, uh, Papillion Sanitation would continue in your neighborhood, um, I can also tell you typically from personal experience. The city gets a much cheaper rate than individuals do or an SID does, so the current rate. And it gets billed on your M U D bill, so it's not anything that you have to personally set up or contract that gets taken care of through the city. The city makes arrangements if this is approved to have a timeline in which it will turn over and everything will be billed on, as part of your M U D bill. How the city does that is they have a contract with Papillion Sanitation for both trash pickup, recycling and yard waste. Um, you get billed based on what size of container and how many containers you pick, so it's kind of a. A specialized plan to what each individual homeowner chooses, currently, um. There are plans anywhere from fourteen dollars and ten cents a month up to nineteen ninety-nine a month, again, depending on. How large of a can you choose, um, how many cans you choose, but you have that option, so the city, again, if, if. If the city council votes to annex this area, that will be something that wastewater works on with the planes sanitation to get a definitive date in place. To get the plane some sanitation sometime, probably again wouldn't take very long, they're already servicing your neighborhood, so it'd just be a matter of coordinating and making sure. That they had all the addresses that they needed, um. Parking on both sides of the streets, no, the city does not typically allow parking on both sides of the streets, again, what happens if, when an area is annexed. That's part of the street department analysis, if you have neighborhood mailboxes, um, location of utility poles, power poles, things like that. Um, the street department will go out, do a thorough analysis and then decide which side of the street, um, they're going to post for parking or no parking. They have a preference, I'm sorry, I don't remember if it's north, south, east, west, but they would go out and post signs. Um, again, that would be something that would probably be done relatively quickly after an annexation is approved. Um, as far as any sewer fee, again, it's all through M U D, I am not sure what you're paying now. I can't speak to exactly what that is currently, that's something I'd have to find out for you, um, I can get that answer for you. Um, you know, if you want to talk to me after the meeting or look up my email on the website, um, send me an email and I can get that information for you. But I'm not, I don't have the definitive number on what, if anything, would change on that, but I can find that out for you.
And there was one more thing, um, there's a few, uh, people have sheds in their backyards and I do know that. Um, over the years, they've probably been there fifteen, I've lived in the neighborhood over twenty years, but they're. Out, or they're within the five foot from their lot lines, I know there was two of them, they were just back to back. Would the, would those be grandfathered in, can you tell me, or will they go out and?
So the good news is you already in the city's jurisdiction and you already follow our current zoning and building codes, so none of that would change, yes. Anybody who has a shed, back in the day, the setback used to be two feet, then it went to three feet, now it's five feet, so yes, those would all be considered grandfather legal, non-conforming. Annexation wouldn't have any impact on that because you're already following our zoning ordinance, so that would stay as is.
All right, I was, um, you know, this is actually for people to review if, when they look in on channel seventeen and, and they'll. Hopefully look at my questions and, and your answers are very good, thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Greetings, everyone, I'm Mr. Biltoff, uh, one four nine one eight Bordeaux Avenue, added, uh, the little Sid sixty-seven. I don't understand what's the benefit of you guys annexing us, what does it do for us because of. Frankly, you're going to siphon off our money because it's financially feasible for the city, it's a benefit to you guys, I got Rusty's master plan. Is to push Bellevue all the way out to thirty-four, so Offit can do a little annexation of another little offsite and all that great stuff, but. Frankly, uh, I know we've gone through this several times before, but of a Sid, the primary function of sanitary improvement districts is to install. And maintain public improvements such as street sewers, utility lines and all the other great stuff. Why is it every time we try to do that, the city of Bellevue bullies us, they send us our cease and desist letters, they won't let us do anything. This is what we're supposed to do, every time we try to improve our area, cease and desist, cease and desist, because when Bellevue annexes us. They assume any debt that we have, well, we're solving, we're positive, they just look at our bank accounts. Also, you have your master, what is it, your twenty thirty streets plan that you've already done before and your twenty thirty-five long-term. Uh, range transportation plan, I got it, you want to make that area the hub, but until you're actually ready to move out that way. I see nothing but farmland between us and Offit, until you're ready to move, until stuff starts getting put in, annexation shouldn't even be on the table. We should be a Sid, remain a Sid and to be able what Sids allow us to do, I oppose any annexation, any annexation of our neighborhood at this point in time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heidi Elward, one four nine one five Versailles and, uh, Normandy Hills, I just had a couple of questions. Um, I wanted to know, so once we're annexed with the city code for Bellevue. What does that do, um, like for RVs that are parked? I don't know what type of that, we had a neighbor that had parked his, in his yard and there were people living in it. And, um, our covenants have, um, expired, so they couldn't really do anything about it. And so I just wondered what the Bellevue, like if we get annexed, how does that work? I mean, can we complain to Bellevue then about that and do they allow that?
I'll go ahead and answer, um, yes, you would be covered under, um, city code and you would be covered by code enforcement, so currently. There are things that code enforcement can enforce in the zoning ordinance that they would already be doing in your area, but they would be limited. Because obviously city code doesn't currently apply to an SID, right? Um, that would be one benefit, when people ask what's the benefit, that would be one, so if you've got. Covenances that have been expired, you don't have an active HOA and you're seeing things in your neighborhood that. Um, you know, aren't quite kosher, those are items that might be covered under city code. As far as RVs, um, and as far as somebody living in an RV, um, that is not allowed. Um, basically, somebody can use that RV to stay in it, um, any fourteen days in, um. A calendar year and that's it, so somebody can't use it as a long-term permanent residence. There's also restrictions as the RV, it can be parked on your property, but it has to be on a hard surface, has to be at least two feet off the property line. And then there's regulations as far as how big it can be, also, it cannot hang over the sidewalk and block. The sidewalk or the right of way, so yes, uh, those things are all covered in zoning as well as city code, so those are. Those types of items would be taken care of.
Okay, that's good to know, and then I just had another question, um, there was the apartments that they were going to build in that. Open lot that have never been built and I was just wondering what's going on with that.
Totally separate, but I'll go ahead and answer that, um, yes, a couple of years ago, there was site plan approval, uh, you're talking on the lot that was. Uh, previously owned by the church right up off Highway seventy-five, um. Multi-family residential developer got site plan approval, came time for permit, this all happened right pre-COVID, it was the end of twenty nineteen. Um, they came in in twenty twenty for a building permit, COVID hit and they said, we can't, with the cost of materials, we can no longer afford to do this. To my knowledge, the property has since sold to another, another developer, at this time, I don't have any application on file, so I'm not sure what their intent is.
Okay, I was just curious, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this matter?
Been twenty years since I've been here.
Welcome back.
Uh, Kevin Bowes from eleven sixteen Grenoble Drive, a couple of questions on, uh, timeline. What are you guys looking for timeline to annex?
If approved, so the public hearing process, it would go through this public hearing tonight. It has to have three readings at city council by statute, okay, so it would go first reading April fifth at city council. It would go public hearing April nineteenth at city council, it would go for a vote May third and we have proposed. Double check, I think it's June second as an effective date, we've, we've gone thirty days out from the approval date, so. It was June second would be if approved, at that May third hearing, it would be a June second effective date.
Okay. Um, what is the difference between, uh, number sixty-seven and two forty-two?
Two forty-two is Cedar View to the south, it's technically a separate SID and maybe Angelie can show that on the map, so those houses there. Um, basically along, let me zoom in because my eyes aren't what they used to be, basically along Cedar View Drive, Cedar View Circle, Cedar View Lane. That's all the Cedar View subdivision, that's all Sid two forty-two.
Two forty-two or sixty-seven?
Two forty-two, sixty-seven is Normandy Hills.
Oh, okay.
So Normandy Hills is to the north and then the smaller subdivision to the south along those couple cul-de-sacs in that street, um, Cedar View Drive. That's Cedar View.
Okay, so they're going to have a less mill levy?
Little bit, yes.
And we're going to have a higher.
Little bit, yes.
Lot bit.
Um, the change.
We're going up eighteen percent.
And when we talk about change in levy, keep in mind, when we're doing our analysis, it's, it's hard to predict exactly what's going to happen, right? Because fortunately, I can say I'm not the person in charge of assessing your property and your, your value.
To him several times.
Luckily, that's not me, um, so you know, those, those values in Sarpy County change often year to year, right? So if we look at existing conditions, if we look at existing levies, because again, those can all change come the fall. Um, with Sid sixty-seven, the change in the levy, it would increase point one three zero five zero is what the change would be. So yes, it is going to increase.
So about a hundred and thirty per thousand, per hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, correct, correct, and again, that's looking at.
What's the average price of a house in Normandy?
That I'm not sure.
Two fifty, three hundred maybe?
In this market, probably anybody's guess, right, um, I, I, I'm honestly not sure, I'd have to look at that.
Four or five hundred dollars roughly or three hundred.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to look at, I'm not sure what the average, the median valuation is for that particular Sid.
So I guess I'm looking at this page where you have, uh, uh, calculations of your valuation. And investments and so forth, your, the city tax is going to go up, we're, we're at five percent, it's going to go up to what? Seven percent, sales tax, seven and a half?
Correct.
Seven and a half, or is it seven?
Seven, seven.
Seven, so it's going up percent and a half.
Yes, correct.
So how much, uh, they have city tax levy revenue at two fifty-seven, eight forty, is that, am I looking at that correct?
Again, and that's just using existing condict, conditions as well as kind of projecting out, so the chart that you're looking at is what was put together. By our finance director.
So how much more sales tax do they got to collect on the one and a half percent do they project?
Sales tax is hard to tell, again, because, um.
It shouldn't be much, I would think.
Right, right.
You know, I don't know, um. So we addressed the mill levy, trash pickup, what if you don't need it, I just want to take care of my twenty-yard dumpster.
Um, that would be a discussion to have with wastewater, I'm not sure if you can opt out or not, um.
I don't think my tenants are going to be happy about that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a discussion we would have to have with wastewater, I'm not sure what their contract with the plane sanitation is, if you can opt out and not. And get your own, I, I'd have to check into that.
A little bigger dumpster than what they're providing, if that's the case. Like a twenty-yard dumpster.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not sure on that question, we'd have to ask, uh, wastewater is in charge of that contract, so we could ask them what that, what they would do in that situation. Or what options you would have.
Okay. So we have good police, we have, I mean, Sarpy County has been very good to us. I know that for a fact, because we had them there for ten days when we had the tornado.
Sure.
And they were spectacular, um, I don't, I, I'm trying to see the benefit. To the annexation, besides me paying more taxes, because our, because our roads are good, they're really good. Getting out there with the snowplows, um, I mean, we're in the Bellevue City Code thing right now. As you, as I well know.
And you're within the zoning jurisdiction, city code is that, yeah, city code doesn't cover you guys, um, building code and then zoning ordinances do cover you, yes.
So I mean, the only thing we're swapping out is what, what's our, what's our? What's our gain? I mean, yeah, I mean, you, I see you have six million dollars in here for a, a road proposal, but that's not a. Is that what that's for?
Not for this particular area, no.
Um, so on that, all right, I can find my page back here. Got a lot on the playground. What's this, uh, potential future capital expenditure, five point?
That's on a different area, that's for a bridge repair in a different area.
Well, it's in sixty-seven. It's in, in, it's in the Excel spreadsheet on Normandy.
And I think he was just using that column as a whole, I don't think it's specific to sixty-seven. That says the packages for a hole.
Why would he have it on there, I guess?
Again, I kind of mentioned this earlier, when staff, when this went out to staff, it went out, all four annexations went out as one package to staff for review. So it was reviewed as a one entire package, so I, that number is not specific to Sid sixty-seven. It's the area, the four areas as a whole.
I just have a hard time, yeah, I understand the annex, I mean, that's, it's, it's a land grab, I understand it, it's a tax grab. Um, but I don't see the, the benefit on, uh, you know, another eighteen percent higher taxes. On which I'm paying a good amount already and we'll have to pass it on to our customers and we did that last year already. And they're not going to be happy, so I'll just put in the letter that according to our increase in taxes, Bellevue has increased us. And we have to pay, and we're not making any money on it, I mean, I'm not going to make any money off, I, you know, I'm going to have another increase in taxes of about, uh. You know, six grand. Yeah, so that's my take. And if you can justify that of why we're doing this, I would like to know. I mean, what's, I, I understand that there will be development further to the south and possibly to the, the east. But somebody needs to explain.
I'll comment when the public hearing's done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this issue? Alright, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing now, turn it over to the commissioners.
One thing that I just wanna say, and maybe this is where Mr. Ackley was gonna go, why annexation? Um, SIDs aren't meant to be SIDs forever. Um, they're designed such a way that it's always meant for the city to come in and eventually annex those areas. That's why the city has an extraterritorial jurisdiction. That's why these areas are already governed by our building code, our fire code, our zoning ordinance. Because the idea is that, um, it's part of the city's natural growth and progression. That's always the city's goal, is to grow and to annex land. Um, this is an SID that has been out there for a long time, I, I understand. Um, took the city a while to get there, just because of how far south it was. But we're there, um, our city limits is adjacent to the north. And so again, this is just kind of the natural growth and progression, the natural growth pattern of the city. And those SIDS are, they're initially structured to always, to eventually be part of the city that, the jurisdiction that they're in.
Everything she just said, basically state statute, Nebraska's unique. Um, we allow the SID structure, it allows builders to basically put in roads, infrastructure, lighting, water, sewer. And they sell bonds to do it, so that they don't have to come out of pocket. In other locations, the developer either has to come out of pocket and take a tremendous risk of putting in millions of dollars of infrastructure, hoping they can put in, uh, improvements. And most SIDs are right on the edge of a city, so the developer takes the risk, knowing that if this development is successful and my bonds pay down, basically it's the next growth area for the city to take them over. Um, in terms of the other way to look at it, and I know you don't wanna hear this, and neither do you, Mr. Ruffner or Biltoff, I apologize. Um, there's also the city we represent, it's not just the folks we're annexing. So if I looked at it from a city perspective, you've been driving on our roads and using our services for a number of years, and we don't collect any tax for you to do that. Again, you don't wanna hear that, but that's also one of the rationale is, um, when you use the city's services, the city's roads, I mean, unless you're actually jumping on Highway seventy-five and driving on nothing but county or state roads outside of your subdivision, chances are you're coming in and out of Bellevue regularly, and we're finally welcoming you into the city. And unfortunately, uh, business-wise, it might come with a, a little bit of a tax increase. Most SIDs actually see a tax decrease when we bring them in. So, again, this, uh, this came before us, I don't wanna, is it two years already? Um, I think we approved it then, it's been in a lawsuit, it's gone up and down the Supreme Court, and here we are again. So you're the next natural growth area, and I guess Ms. Palm, maybe a question for staff. Can you show on that map, which should be south of the, the Cedar View? Again, I don't know if it's public that something has been bought or purchased, or, or is that still not able to be stated?
Um, on, uh, the last city council agenda, yes, the city did, uh, put under contract a portion of land that's to the south of here.
Okay. Thank you.
Michelle Ritz?
Just, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, um, right now, if you're in an SID, you don't get to vote for city council or mayor, correct?
Correct.
So I know that this may not equal out for some people, but right now you guys are under Bellevue's jurisdiction on a lot of things. You don't have any representation on the city council, you don't have representation with the mayor. So there are eight hundred and seventy-seven people that live there, five hundred voting. I'm gonna guess that you're gonna have a councilman that has your ear for getting that second access to getting anything else that you want. From my perspective, that would be something very worthwhile if I was living there. Um, like I said, some people may value that differently, but you are getting the ability to have your voices heard in the city council and the mayor, um, and a significant por- population chunk that will now influence things. So just wanted to kind of point that out as another benefit from my perspective for, for you guys.
And, and I guess I would echo what Tammy mentioned in her introduction, is probably your, one of your best benefits. Is this your best opportunity to get another access, uh, in and out of the area? Which, you know, when I, with the Highway seventy-five improvement, that was the biggest complaint out of the residents in Normandy Hills. So, uh, clearly it's not gonna happen the way things are currently. Uh, and as Tammy mentioned, this is probably your best bet of getting that access.
And I would just add to that, uh, that whole issue came up two years ago when we were considering this annexation before, uh, before the lawsuit that was, has been settled or decided. But, uh, ever since the, this, that second access point along Highway seventy-five was taken away with the changes to, with the changes made by NDOT, uh, in Sarpy County. So being annexed, uh, while it will come with higher taxes, is your best bet for getting that access? That second access point that everybody has been wanting, needing, and should be there.
I guess a question for staff, one thing we haven't talked about, can we click through what the zoning is on these? One of my concerns, I guess, when we do annexation is to the extent we have ag land, once they get annexed, they lose their ag status for tax purposes. Again, with the exception of what we might have under contract, if it's currently ag and it's gonna switch, I guess that's-
So nothing in this package is zoned ag, nothing, uh, sixty-seven, two forty-two. It all has either, um, commercial zoning, multi-family zoning, or single-family residential zoning. Um, yes, there are some parcels that we are, uh, proposing later on that are zoned ag. Again, the cities, um, how the city looks at that is, the statute allows us to take in ground that's urban and suburban in nature. We believe that the land that is south of here, even though not developed yet, is still considered urban and suburban in nature. Um, and if you look, some of the zoning that is to the south is not ag. Um, that actually has some different zoning on it. Uh, for whatever reason, there's a strip of BG, there's some residential zoning on there.
But for tonight's applications or requests for annexation, all of these are not ag.
Nothing in the first package that you're gonna vote on is ag. Um, nothing in Normandy Hills or Cedar View is currently ag. But in some of the other packages that we have split out, some of those parcels are zoned ag. So yes, there is ag zoning in the area that we're looking at in totality.
Are the landowners aware of, again, I imagine they got notice of annexation, did they get notice of what that means if they get annexed in terms of no longer qualifying for?
The planning department did not provide specific, um, information in that notice as far as tax implications. Um, I believe the best person to talk to in regards to that would be the county assessor, because I can't, I can't speculate. Um, other than impacting green belt, I'm not sure, um, what ramifications that may have on property value.
I guess that's my only concern on annexing any areas that are currently ag and are not planned to be developed, or the owner does not specifically say I'm okay with it because they're planning to sell. Um, it becomes, they, they face the biggest tax burden. I know we've had that in previous annexations we've done, and I generally vote against those annexations. So if I'm following the map here, anything in green is ag, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And in terms of, I think it's package number two, how much of that would be part of what recently sold or is under contract that is gonna be converting from something?
Angela, could you click on the portion that is under contract on the map? Sorry, my computer's not the one showing on the screen, it's not hooked up to the... It's to the south, it's the, that corner there, um, if you click on it.
Uh, we don't go that far. So that's the portion that's selling, or that's the portion that's?
The city owns that.
That's the, that's the portion currently under contract.
Okay, and based on the zoning, how about the next parcel to the right?
That's a separate piece of property.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, I think I see the owners of that property in the audience, I guess I'm not sure if-
And we're gonna, we're gonna, so you're getting ahead of us, Mr. Ackley?
Yep, yep.
We have it split up, so, um, the public hearing we got done with now is annexation area one, which is Normandy Hills and Cedar View. So if you guys want to move out of that, I would say let's take a motion. Either have further discussion on that pa- portion, take a motion and vote, so we can move on, or, um-
Are there any other, uh, comments or questions related to three C? So SIDs sixty-seven and two forty-two?
Quick question for staff on that, uh, the comment earlier about the concrete that was marked for repair, and then the comment about, uh, the cease and exist, is that because of the pending annexation that the city asked that that? Cause that would have been the Sid's responsibility to-
Correct. So what happens is statutorily, when the city intends to annex an area, statutorily, we give notice, and then yes, it freezes our assets. So what happened here is, we gave that notice two and a half years ago, two years ago, whatever the case may be. Um, we later withdrew that annexation request, once we had the lawsuit pending on the land to the north. So that all got withdrawn, once that got withdrawn, it was, you know, the Sid could have done what they needed to do as far as repair, maintenance, any of that. And they still can, they just need, if it's being, um, looked at and is actively being pursued through a public hearing process, they'd have to have the city permission to spend that money. It still could happen, it just has to ha- happen with, you know, the public works director's permission, city administrator, whatever the case may be. Um, when we move forward, when our, um, when we won the lawsuit on the property to the north, and then again decided to pursue this, we again sent out a letter last month, um, notifying the SID attorney and effectively the Sid board that yes, this was our intent, and then that process starts over again.
Cause I am aware of some pretty major reconstruction that was done in the fall. Bring to, if that was addition, uh, additional areas that were marked, but, but I think that answers my question.
That was just at the entrance part where they came on, up of the South Fork River Road South. And then to turn to the east to go up on the road.
Sir, I'm sorry, um, for procedures, we, we have to have a vote to open the public hearing to have him answer a question, so-
And I wasn't asking him a question.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else commissioners, or do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion of approval based, uh, upon the positive financial impact on the city and the natural growth and development of the city.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Arnie, second by Commissioner Ritz. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, so this will go to the city council on April nineteenth. Moving on to three D, which is a request to annex tax lot nine A one, except right of way, section twenty-three dash thirteen dash thirteen, tax lot nine B, except right of way, section twenty-three dash thirteen dash thirteen, and the irregular northeasterly part of tax lots fourteen A and fourteen B, section twenty-three dash thirteen dash thirteen, all located in section twenty-three, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth prime meridian, and all abod- abutting rights of way, applicant, city of Bellevue. Ms. Palm, any updates?
No, nothing further to add.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing on this particular-
We'll get a, we'll get a map up, so, um, everyone can see the map for this particular area.
Okay, so the, what we're talking about now is the annexation for this particular parcel. Is there anybody who wishes to come forward and speak on this particular case? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Commissioner Ritz? Commissioner Arnie?
Unless there's any comment, I'd go ahead and make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve based on the positive financial impact on the city and the natural growth and development of the city.
Oh, fuck it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Arnie, second by Commissioner Compton. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
And again, this one will also go before the city council on April nineteenth. Moving on to three E, a request to annex tax lot, tax lots, five A and sixteen A, and the northeast quarter of the north, northwest quarter, and the north half of the southeast quarter west of road, located in section twenty-three, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth prime meridian, and part of tax lot three lying west of Fifth Street, located in section fourteen, township thirteen N, range thirteen east of the sixth prime meridian, and all abutting rights of way, applicant, city of Bellevue. Anything to add, Ms. Palm?
No.
Okay. This one is now open for a public hearing, does anybody wish to come up and speak on this parcel, this case?
Yeah, my name is John Iskey, and I represent the nineteen oh four farm. I'm the fourth generation on this farm. We've been in there for, uh, hundred and thirteen years. Mr. Ackley remembers us, cause he represented us on a previous, uh, lawsuit with, uh, NRD. Uh, we had, uh, before thirty-four went in, we had a hundred and sixty-eight field there, they cut it right in half. We went to quarter with that. So we gave up that, we gave up land for the NRD, and now we're against the annexation of it. You know, I, they made some remarks about a second access to this Normandy Hills property. Uh, a few years back, uh, Mr. Ryan, that was part of the SID in Normandy Hills, requested the county to come and take a look at it, and they came out and sent a survey crew to survey our property without us knowing about it. I come home from work and there they are. It didn't make me happy. Uh, we run them off the place, then we got a call from the county commissioners, wha- what's the deal? Well, we didn't know who it belonged to. Your county commissioners, you should know this, you should do some homework on it. Anyway, so we had a meeting with them, and we got in my truck. And if you look on the map, uh, they don't show it on this map, but on the improvements that they wanna make on the, for the city parks in Normandy Hills, at the end of the park, there's an easement that goes down to the road by National By. They got an easement there, they got a water line, they got a sewer line. When the county commissioners were in my pickup, we were driving down this access road across from National By. I said, look down, what do you see? Manhole covers. They had access, they had an easement there. So that was their second way out, and Mr. Ryan said, we knew it was there, but the farmers kept tearing up our lines, so we don't use that, we don't wanna use that. That was their second access. There's fire hydrants there, but they didn't wanna use that. Instead, they wanted to come over top of the hill, they'd have to take a big cut, they wanted to make a rock road down to fifth street, which was gravel. And it wasn't feasible. Putting rock road there, making a fifteen foot cut just to hook onto there? But you know, like I said, what I'm concerned about is the water issue. They haven't, you know, done any studies about the water flow. Uh, there is two waterways through there, as you can see the tree lines. One goes up to, to uh, Cedar View. Uh, it's over to the west. South and west. Okay, now go south. Okay, you can see the tree line, okay, one comes from Cedar View, and there's three, and that all runs into the Papio Creek. That's considered a federal waterway. You know, that's something you gotta consider too. And all this ground that you see is no tilt to conserve the, the ground, cause you're, that is yellow clay and it runs like you can't believe. I had a heck of a time keeping terraces on it. And you know, i- if you do soil samples on there and check it, you know, the compaction is not that great. How many people have went down thirty-four lately? Have you drove across there? When you get to the part right over the railroad, you feel that bump? They mudjacked it twice already. The, the approach is sinking because they built it on a spring. When they start building thirty-four, we tried to tell them, it's a spring right there in the middle. And they build it anyway, we know what we're doing. Well, the bridge start falling down, and they had to build a wall back up, put more pilings in. So now the spring has actually gone outside of the barriers, gone farther up. We get springs now in our place that we never had before. If you look at the approach on thirty-four on both sides, when you approach the bridge, they're eroding. The inner, the, the highway department's gotta do something with that, or it's gonna go. So, and another point, if you look at that map where it hooks on, and they wanna have a easement into Normandy Hills, the other concern you gotta look at is, well, the drainage goes down right alongside thirty-four from that piece of property. If you look at it, it, it drops really fast down to fifth street. And the other concern I have is if there's an accident, which there's been quite a few people turning off of the highway there on thirty-four, where are people gonna go? They're gonna go north through the SID. You know, that's not only gonna include cars and trucks, but semis. So that's gonna put a hazard there too. So, these are things to consider, you know, it's not just only our property. You know, it's, you know, just a lot of things, and we tried to, try to see what, you know, what'll work and stuff. Like I said, we've been there for a hundred and eighteen years, and try to tell these engineers, oh, we got a degree. But we know how things run down here, you know, water flows downhill and they don't see that. And uh, you know, I worked with the, the FSA and uh, NRCS, when our terraces broke, they wouldn't fix them for ten years. And by that time, we had a, a waterway, they said that'll work. It was twenty feet wide, thirty feet deep, and tried to fill that in. And so it, there's a lot of things to consider, but like I said, for safety reasons, you know, I, I think if they go through the inner, the, that's if there's an accident, they'd go through the SID, and it's hard on the streets and everything else. You know, I can see, you know, there's a lot of timber ground and stuff up in there, and a gentleman earlier was talking about the trees, a hundred year old trees and stuff. We got some there, and we measured the other day, sixteen and a half feet around. It's an oak tree, I don't know how old it is. I contacted the, the Arbor Society and they're gonna come up and take a look at it. Cause I think it's a lot bigger than the one up in Pocahontas State Park. But, you know, it's, it's, it's waterways and stuff like that that every time it rains real hard underneath the bridge on fifth street, you know, it, it's mud. You know, it really, it really is mud. And then when they put Cedar View in, you know, I spoke at the meeting protesting against it. And from Cedar View, you can see where it comes down there and it goes through the ditch, and it goes towards fifth street. When it hits fifth street, it's gotta go north or south, and then it goes underneath the bridge, or down the ro- uh, road, and right alongside, it goes to the creek. That one ditch right there drains everything from Miller Road, you know, by La Platte, Normandy Hills, off the highway, so there's a lot of water that comes through there. So, you know, when we got flooded in this last flood, it wasn't nothing, it was from the Platte River that got us. So, you know, that's, it's something to consider, you know, I appreciate your time and, you know, trying to voice my opinion. Like I said, we've been here for a hundred and eighteen years, and uh, we'd like to keep farming. I mean, we're not gonna be there forever, but, you know, with the situation it is, you know, sooner or later. But uh, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Iskey.
Question for staff, I didn't.
Is there anybody else who wanted to speak on this issue?
I guess question for staff, I have a potential conflict of interest, I guess. I've represented the Iskeys, I didn't even look at land ownership. I should probably recuse myself for appearance of conflict, I certainly don't represent them here on this, but.
Okay. Yeah. Please note that Commissioner Ackley is leaving the chamber at eight fifteen.
Yeah, my name's Kathy Iskey, um, one six five zero five Iskey Drive. I guess, um, this was the only letter we got a week ago, our first indication of anything, anything gonna happen. And the map also was wrong, didn't show the whole property, so we didn't know. And we stopped into the office earlier today to try to get some information. And anyway, so this was our first indication, anything like this was gonna hap- was being even proposed. I guess there was a, a notice in the paper, but we didn't really notice it, there was like, there was no maps or anything. We did get the Bellevue paper, but um, I'm just wondering what uh, any benefit it would be to us? The, the total property is being farmed, everything except for the buffers of the waterway. We've, it's been farmed continuously since nineteen oh four, it's all farm ground. So I'm just wondering, what is the impact to us with this annexation?
Can I ask a quick question? So we did send letters out almost three weeks ago on March fourth. Did it go to your correct address? We're, we're using, your property is in like an LLC, so we're using whatever address the assessor's office has?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean la- last week, I had right on here, it was received the eighth of March, March eighth.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure, cause we did send him out on the fourth, so wanted to make sure that we had your correct address.
But I guess I'm concerned with what is the impact to us? Or what, and what is the benefit? Um, I, I guess I went in and read some statute or something, and it says when an annexation is, occurs, um, the city has detailed plans of, uh, and costs of providing services. You know, we're on a well, we're on a septic. We can't even get, uh, we have to have satellite for internet even. So I'm trying to figure out what kind of services the city would provide, and um, just whatever kind of benefit it is to us, except for the fact that we know, we know Bellevue's marching to the Platte River. I just don't feel like annexation of that portion is, it seems like it's premature, which brings me to one other point. It's my understanding that the Darling plant was still in litigation, and what I'm hearing here is it's over. Doesn't show on the, doesn't show on the maps, I mean the um, the assessor's maps or anything, so.
I'll start answering a few questions.
Well, I mean, we have, I didn't realize that this was this, our first, our, our first indication, and it's here, it's a public hearing. We had no information at all about what the impact is, or what it's gonna mean, or anything. And we're already at this formal hearing part.
Right, so statutorily, let me talk about notice a little bit. So statutorily, um, uh, the statute that the city of Bellevue operates under, it requires us to send a ten day notice. So we have to mail it out at least ten days in advance. We, we tried to do it three weeks in advance, um, once we knew that this was our intention, just because we, we wanted to try to give folks as much time as possible to come to our office to be able to ask questions. Um, yes, we also do that legal ad, so that legal ad went into the paper a couple of weeks ago as well. So those are the couple of things that we do to make sure that we notice. Um, as far as litigation on the Darling property, it was recently resolved. So it went to district court, it went to the supreme court, it got remanded back to the district court. So it was just a very recent decision that resolved it. So that all happened, I can't tell you the exact date, but probably within the last six to eight weeks, so it's been very recent. Um, but it's been a nearly two year process for it to go through that, that court system and to go through that litigation, okay? Um, GIS does show it in the city limits, again, they changed it. Um, I just was looking here a little while ago, they changed it once we got notice of that court ruling. So, um, if you look at the boundary on GIS, it does show the Darling property, um, and what the lawsuit refers to as the Creche property in the city limits. If you go to boundary, scroll down, there you go, right there, right there, boundary. And if you would take off the ETJ, the purple for me, under boundary, nope, stay in boundary, and then um, click on the plus, and then take off the ETJ for me down below. There you go, take off the ETJ. If you can zoom in, you can see that black dash line, um, that represents city limits, and maybe if you take off the aerial, it's easier to see. But the black dash line represents the city limits, there you go, right, right there, I don't know if you can see it. Um, that represents the current city limits of Bellevue as a result of the resolution of that litigation. As far as benefit to you, um, if you wanna keep farming it, absolutely. Um, Mr. Iskey, I would hope that we would be a much better neighbor and that we wouldn't come trespass on your land. I would like to think that the city would not do that, um, and would have those discussions with you prior. Um, if you wanna stay on well septic, you wanna keep farming it, great, um, absolutely, you can do that. The one benefit I can think of is, at such time, if you decide to sell, yes, development is marching south, right? We believe it's gonna be at the intersection of seventy-five and thirty-four fairly soon. Um, if you decide to sell, perhaps it makes your land more valuable. Um, because it is in the city limits, um, it has the potential for those city services. We're to the point where there is now a plan and a timeline in place. Um, the South Sarpy Sewer Infrastructure, that's all gonna go in, that's scheduled to be done by twenty twenty-four. Um, MUD's gonna come in, their timeline is the water line would be done within six months of that, so within six months of that being done.
What does that mean?
That means that there would be sanitary sewer and there would be water available in the area. Um, I don't have a map of that sewer, if my recollection serves correctly, it's gonna go on the south side of thirty-four, but it would be in the area, and again, if development happens at that intersection like we think it is, all those city services are gonna get extended, so they're gonna be knocking on your door, so to speak. Again, you guys can keep status quo as is, if you decide not to sell, you wanna be there farming for another hundred and twenty years? Not a problem, um, right?
Well.
Obviously, there's tax implications if you're in the city limits, yes.
So what is the justification for the, the taxes, how high our taxes will be?
It, it's hard to say exactly, again, because what we look at currently is current levies, current assessed valuation, so when our finance director does his analysis, it's all based on existing conditions today. Obviously, in Sarpy County, those are ever changing, ever evolving, depending on what the market does, depending on what tax levies do, the de- different taxing entities. But yes, there is going to be a financial impact if you are annexed in the form of higher taxes. That, that is going to be the case. Um, again, looking at existing, existing numbers and existing levies in this area, uh, the change in levy would be an increase of point four three zero five. Which ends up being, again, using today's current conditions, approximately four hundred and thirty dollars per a hundred thousand dollars assessed valuation. There's also gonna be green belt implications, um, as far as losing that green belt. I only know enough about that to be dangerous, you'd have to talk to the assessor and have a very frank conversation with him about what potential impact that could have on your valuation. I'm not sure how they would change it.
Green belt will be gone, is that what you're saying?
Correct. So that's a discussion that I would encourage you to have with the assessor, because again, I can't, I'm not knowledgeable enough, um, in that appraisal realm to tell you what those, what those ramifications might be and how that will impact your appraised value of your land.
What is the services the city is gonna be, will provide? I mean.
When you have undeveloped land, it's a little bit different. Obviously, a developed area, they're gonna get trash service, they're gonna get, you know, if you had a, if you, you don't have a, is there a house there on that property?
There, farmhouse, yes.
Farmhouse, are you guys current?
On the road, on the whole road.
Gotcha, are you guys currently living in it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you could have the opportunity for city services as far as um, garbage service, papillion sanitation. Um, you would have that option.
We have a dumpster now there.
Okay, okay. So some of those things like that would apply to you, but again, if you are on well and septic, you wanna stay on well and septic, you don't wanna develop the land, then.
Can you tell me what the dumpster price is?
I cannot, sorry. I, I know I, we had that question from a gentleman earlier, I don't have that information. Um, we can get it from wastewater. Um, if you wanna stay till after the public hearing, I can give you my information.
Um, well, like I said, we, we came to get some information.
Sure.
And this is already, it seems like you're gonna vote on just, it's done deal.
This, this wouldn't be a done deal. Um, this is just one step of the process. It has to have three readings before city council, so you guys will get notice again. Um, what will happen is, the, the planning commission is appointed officials, so they're recommending body. They don't make a decision one way or another that has, um, you know, they can't make the final decision, it's a recommendation to city council. So, the vote that happens tonight's a recommendation that moves forward to city council. It'll go for first reading at city council on April fifth. First reading is just a formality, they don't take any public hearing. Public hearing would be April nineteenth. And again, at least two weeks prior, we will send you a notice letting you know of that date, time, place. Those hearings are held here, six PM, um, and that will be April nineteenth. City council won't vote on it till May third. And again, city council as the elected officials, they're the ones that will vote and make that decision as to whether you're brought in or out. So, nothing with um, finality will be decided here tonight. Whatever vote happens here tonight will be a recommendation, and there's the city council process.
So, and, and we do have two other owners of the property, so it's my sibling, all, all, there's four of us, and one, and, um, two. Of us and one, and, um, two live out of, si- out of state, um.
The other thing is too, if you have property owners that live out of state, anybody wants to send an email that gets put as part of the public record to city council. That's an option. If they can't attend in person, they can email myself or the city clerk and we make sure that information gets passed along to them.
Well, my sister did email and wanted information on the annexation and what came back was, oh.
Yes, she, she had, she had emailed and asked.
And so that's where we're heading and.
Right. She had emailed and she thought that it was illegal for the city to annex ag ground. We can statutorily annex ag ground as long as it's done, um, as long as it's adjacent and contiguous. And it's, it is urban and suburban in nature by statute.
Well, and again, we, we thought, we, we thought it was still in litigation, Darling property, so, um.
Understood, yeah.
It sounded like it wasn't, um, adjacent. And, and then from the, from the map that we got, it didn't show the other parcel, and so it's like, they're just talking that parcel and.
Yep, and I apologize for that. That's since been corrected, but yeah, again, this will all have to go before city council. So the public hearing process will again play out in front of city council, so you folks will have an opportunity to come and speak directly to city council.
Okay, so you said that was April fifth, right?
April fifth is the first reading, so all they do is they read the ordinance by title only. They don't take any public input. April nineteenth is the date that you wanna remember and that's, we'll send you notice out at least a couple of weeks ahead of time. That meeting happens here, six PM, but it's the nineteenth.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Like I said, I, it just kinda hit us like.
And like I said, I would encourage you to go talk to the assessor's office and, and ask them those specific questions about tax implications. Because they're the ones that can better answer that between now and the next public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I got one more thing, uh. I went to the ag show recently and, and inquired about having a pole shed put up. And I went to a couple of different, cause I got a combine and a couple of heads and stuff to get it out of the yard, keep it undercover, you know. So it wouldn't be an eyesore. And I talked to six different builders. And they wouldn't even talk to me. He said, where do you live? And I told them, just south of Bellevue, and they just threw up their hands. What's the deal? And he said, we have such a hard time getting anything built down there. They got so many covetance to, to do it. If we're in, right now, according to Sarpy County. If it's ag related, if it's an ag building, you know, there's no problem. You know, it's just a three-sided pole barn.
So currently, you're covered under our zoning and building already, and you're right, there's state statutes that are a little bit different. If, call and talk to our permits department, because if you fall under the statutory definition of the ag use. You don't necessarily need a permit for a pole barn. Um, even if you do need a permit, you can still get one. Ag zoning is pretty liberal. You can put up a large pole barn, um, eh, like I said, but eh, whether or not you need a permit. You may not need to, cause if you're farming the ground, as long as.
Cause I, you know, I was getting, you know, from Sarpy County and, you know, from the City of Bellevue, I was getting two different deals.
Right. It gets, it gets confusing because you're not in city limits at this point in time, but you're still covered under our ordinances. So if you call the permits department and say, hey, this is what I do, this is what I have. Like I said, they can tell you whether or not you need a permit, cause you may not even need a permit.
Sixteen feet tall to get the combine under and then the heads, I can stack them in there.
You'd be able to do that under the zoning ordinance.
It opened to one end, it just to keep the rain.
If you do need a permit, that's something that would be allowed in your current zoning.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, commissioners, we have questions, statements, comments? Commissioner Ritz.
I got two big, two items on this one, um. Based on the report on what, page nine? It doesn't seem that this is a really financially positive impact or zone to annex. This is area three. We're gonna bring in additional thirty-five plus thirty-five thousand, so about forty-eight or thirty-eight. Increase in department cost is fifty-one, doesn't seem very s- uh, that that's in the positive interest of the city for this annexation. And then, I believe that we kinda set a precedence about two years ago when we were looking at these that, those properties that had green belt status. We excluded. And so from that perspective, for myself, I'm gonna be voting against this portion of the annexation.
Guess I would make a comment. I know we're recommending body. I believe you're correct that we went, we recommended denial for those. But I believe city council annexed every one of those that we recommended denial on. So I'm just putting that out there, that that's kinda the route the city's already gone.
I'm still gonna stick by my precedents earlier. The city, that's their job to make that decision. This is, you know, our re- my recommendation on this situation. If they change, if they overrule me, that's, they get paid more, so.
And thinking back to a couple of years ago when we had several annexations and some of them dealt with green belt status. We didn't make it uniform. It wasn't all, it would, it was case by case and not all of them were denied, so.
I think the only one we skipped was the ones that weren't actually being farmed. Were the ones that were ag, they had green belt, but they weren't being farmed. Um, I'm pretty confident on this one that they are farming on these, on this property, so, um.
Any other comments, commissioners, questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve based upon positive financial impact on the city and the natural growth and development of the city.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnie, second by Commissioner Casey. Please vote.
Four voted yes. Mr. Hankins, Mr. Ritz, Mr. Perrin voted no. Mr. Ackley abstained. Motion carried.
Okay, and again, this will go for a public hearing before the city council on April nineteenth. Can somebody let Mr. A- Ackley know he can return to the chamber, please? Oh, three comes. Should I go ahead? Okay. Moving on to case number three F. Request to annex part of tax lot F one A and part of tax lot J, except part taken for NRD. Tax lot F one B and part of tax lot H, part of tax lot F one A, part of tax lot J, taken for F, NRD. And part of tax lot K, all located in section eleven, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth prime meridian. Parts, part of lots twelve A, thirteen B, and fourteen B, Butterfield subdivision. Part of lot thirteen A, north of drainage ditch, and part of lot fourteen, Butterfield subdivision, all except part for NRD. Part of lot thirteen and part of lot fourteen, Butterfield subdivision, all for NRD. Parcel ID zero one one six zero five one one seven. Part of tax lot fourteen, located in section eleven, township thirteen north, rid- range thirteen east of the sixth prime meridian. Together with lots thirteen C and twelve B, Butterfields addition, subdivision. Part of vacated state right of way in the east half of the east half of the southeast quarter and adjacent tax lot fourteen, section ten. Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth prime meridian. Part of vacated state right of way in the southwest quarter of the southwest, quarter west of Fort Creek Road South. Section eleven, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth prime meridian and lot one C. Home tag subdivision and all abutting rights of way applicant City of Bellevue. Nothing to add on this one, I take it? Or do you have something to add?
The one thing I will add, so if we can, there's the area for map. Um, if you guys remember, we've had a couple of changes of zone that have come up before the commission here in the last year or so. Um, a large portion of this is property that was rezoned ML for papillion sanitation. They are in the process of moving their headquarters over in this location. Um, we've done some pre-application meetings with them as far as building permits. I think that they are getting ready to. Um, go ahead and develop that area. Also, um, Dinah, could you go back to the other map? Thanks. Um, Papillion Sanitation is that area, um, that's off to the west, that's kind of in between. Fort Creek Road and Highway seventy-five. Also, a portion of this property that's just north of Fairview Road. Um, that was recently zoned light industrial. Again, industrial developer intends to, in the near future, come in with a building permit and do some, uh, large warehouse facilities. So this is an area that is right now vacant, but, uh, again, is getting, has been rezoned. And is getting ready to be developed. Um, we also take over, are proposing to take over a portion that's just north to the creek. Um, currently, our city limits goes just to, um, goes down Shilling Road, but it doesn't encompass all of that Butterfield subdivision. So to be contiguous, um, we would go ahead and we would annex a little bit of land that's north of the creek as well.
Okay. Anybody who wishes to speak on this matter? It's open for public comment. Seeing now, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners? Comments? Questions? Motion?
I'll go four for four about this. Uh, I'll make an approval based upon the positive financial impact on the city and the natural growth and development of the city.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Arnie, second by Commissioner Ritz. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Do we have any current business?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Okay, she will make the motion.
Motion by commit- commissioner, Commissioner Casey, second by Commissioner Perrin. Could we do a voice vote if it's not, oh?
All voted yes, we're adjourned.
Thank you.